This time I'll call the September meeting of the Haywood County Board of Education to order. This time I'd like to ask Mr. Jimmy Rogers, the leader center invocation. It'll immediately be followed by our pledge of allegiance. Everyone please rise. Let us pray.
Most kind and gracious heavenly father, again we thank you for this opportunity to be here. Lord, we pray especially that you continue to lay your healing hands upon those of this family, of this young child that we lost so early in life, and his family. Lord, we pray that you comfort them and guide them through these tough times. And let them all be comforted to know that, once again, we will join together in that eternal heaven. Lord, we pray that you guide us as board members. You guide our staff, our teachers, our custodial staff, our cafeteria workers and bus drivers, Lord, every day, that those children are first on our minds and first on our hearts. And we want to give them the best education possible. Lord, we pray that we're able to do that through you, through your guidance and the decisions that we make as this board that help govern and rule the schools. We pray, Lord, that this is the right thing to do, as always, and help us and guide us that we will do the right things on our daily walk with you. Guide us and direct us in all that we do, Lord, and we'll always give you the praise and the glory for it all. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. I have a few announcements this evening. First of all, I'd like to take this opportunity to publicly thank Ms. Rhonda Shandival for arranging for the Board of Education to be able to ride through the Labor Day Parade. I think some of us rode and some of us walked, but we had good turnout. The Hall of Board Members represented at the Labor Day Parade. Ms. Shandival, thank you so much.
Thank you, and I want to thank Ken Wilson Board for donating us the track, and Susan Danini, who's one of the salespeople over there, for setting it all up and doing all she did to make that happen. It was fun.
We didn't take it back then or anything, did we?
Not that I know of.
Okay. There's another line item on the budget. That's great. Thank you again, Rhonda. We're going to put you in charge of all of our social events.
Love it.
Very good. You did a great job, and we thank you.
Thank you.
And the board was well represented. Mr. Kirkpatrick couldn't be here this evening due to some family responsibilities he had tonight. He asked me to announce that he wishes he could be here, but he has family obligations tonight that he had to attend to. So we respect that, Mr. Kirkpatrick, and children first. Our next regular board meeting will be here October 13th, here at the Education Center at 7:00. Board members, remember to let Ms. Moody know if you plan on attending the North Carolina School Board Association District Eight meeting, which will be held over at Cherokee Central High School, or Central Schools, actually. I think the whole campus is their school system. And if you haven't been to see the school, it's worth a trip over to see it, let alone the great agenda that the School Board Association has set up for us for that fall district meeting. That's September the 25th from 4 to 8, and we can carpool if you like. So just let Ms. Moody know about your travel plans. We've got coming up this week, the Teacher of the Year Luncheon up at Law Ridge at 12 noon. I think we've already let the powers that be know whether we're going to be there or not. If you haven't, please take time to let them know as soon as possible. If you do plan on being there and you haven't, letting them know that you will be there so they can make arrangements for your meal. Also, the North Carolina School Board Association has a Fall School Law Conference over in Asheville at the Renaissance Hotel. If you plan on being there, again, let Ms. Moody know of your plans on attending this informative and important law conference. Are there any other announcements from folks? Did I forget anything? Which I normally do. Under agenda adjustments, we've been asked to add some items from the Building and Grounds Committee. Mr. Leatherwood, we will call on you between items 16 and 17. We'll call it 16B. We'll have the building grounds right there. So please add that to the agenda. Any other adjustments or additions to the agenda?
I think Mr. Branson, item number 14 probably needs to be deleted. I think we also have one.
Okay.
That's the second.
Item number 14 would be deleted. Anything else? There being nothing else, we'll start our agenda with Ms. Jill Chambers. Ms. Chambers?
This is my support team. Chairman Francis, Board, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, we, Jill Chambers, this is Karen Keeling, Riverbend lead teacher, Nikki Barker, Riverbend librarian. We are here simply to say thank you for what you do. As unpaid volunteers, we know that you spend countless hours making decisions in the best interests of our students. We thank you for your dedication in leading our district. With this being said, we wanted to share a little of Riverbend with you tonight. We know with your full-time jobs and full lives, it might be hard to get out to us, so we want to bring us to you. We do invite you to come out anytime, and we thank you again for what you do because we are a safe and wonderful place to learn and work. That's it. Bye.
Those are the official reasons that DPI allows us to put on our resignation form. One of the things we do as well to determine teachers' intent when they resign is to do an exit survey, and we do that online using Google. It is confidential. We do not collect their names or any identifying information, and we ask about 15 questions relating to the district to try to gather information as to why they leave. Again, this slide shows you reasons people have left since March of 2013 and up to March 2014. This is the last year of data that we turned in to DPI. We turned this in in early June. And again, you can see retiring with full benefits and retiring with partial benefits are the two largest. This year, one that was sort of surprising, well, not necessarily surprising, but it was interesting to see, was how many people left the Haywood County School System to teach in another state. And if you look at that one, over the last five years, we've had 16 people leave since 2009 to teach in another state. And over the summer, I'll show you another slide here, and over the summer, we had seven, half of what we've had in the last five years, leave to teach in another state just this summer. Most of those went to Georgia. And what they told me was that the increase in base pay was about $10,000 just on base pay, not counting any local supplements or other contracts that they might get from those school systems. We had two teachers we interviewed pretty extensively about why they went to Georgia and that that $10,000 pay increase was a pretty good draw. Plus, if they have children and they meet the requirements, they can have a free college education if they're residents of Georgia. Just go back. This is a comparison chart that will show you the five-year total that's in blue, and then just this summer, April to September is in red, and it kind of shows you some of the areas where, just over the summer, we've had at least half of what we've had over five years ago, just in the summertime. I pulled off some, this is verbatim, word for word, of what the teachers typed into the exit survey in Google, and I just copied and pasted it onto this slide for you just to see. Those are typical responses that teachers put on there why they were resigning or why they were leaving. And most of it has to do with, you know, not having a pay raise in so long and trying to make a little more money. Of course, it's not all about money, and they wouldn't want us to characterize it that way, but it is a motivator when you can't pay your bills, you know, and you haven't had a pay raise in a long time. One of them was able to take full retirement. A lot of them say they worry about what the legislature is going to do. They're fairly unpredictable. But most of them talked about, one talked about leaving because of legislation in North Carolina and going to private school where that legislation's not felt quite as severely. These are some typical suggestions, and again, I just put three because they tend to just repeat themselves. And most of the teachers that retired just put down, you know, they were glad to be able to retire, and they were glad working for the school system. Those were very positive. The ones that left to go to other counties, you can see, these are fairly repetitive, talking about local supplements. One talked about high-stakes testing. That was sort of an outlier. And they didn't really blame Haywood County Schools, they just said there's opportunity elsewhere to make more money. Any questions?
How many teachers were there in the system?
About 530.
Yes, sir.
Now, that's, we have more certified personnel, but as far as actual classroom teachers.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hines.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I don't know what to say about that, other than just, yeah, wow's a good word. Of course, when you, the numbers were like that, especially when you look at flat salaries for six years, I mean, anyway, it's hard not to get political, so we won't. Next on our agenda is Mr. Greg Parker.
Chairman Francis, members of the board, doctor and doctor. As you know, the PEP grant is winding up this month, and I wanted to give you just kind of a down-and-dirty exit report, which you should have in your folder, and I'm not going to read it to you unless you want me to, but I just wanted to...
I prefer to be... Overruled.
Just wanted to highlight a few things that have taken place this year. As you know, we completed our fitness labs, one in Tuscaloosa and three at the middle schools. That was a large agenda item for us this year, as well as the two elementary kinesthetic classrooms. I think some of you have been by to see those things, and they're really pretty neat tricks, and the kids seem to be enjoying them, and of course, kids are enjoying the fitness room, too, if you can actually enjoy fitness rooms. But they're reaping the benefits, maybe that's a better way to put it. On page three, we talk about all the opportunities that PE teachers had during the year, as far as going to workshops and different trainings. At the bottom, it starts talking about the student data that we collected. You know, there are four measures that we use to measure the impact of the grant, and they're listed there. Two of them, we met our result, met our target, two it did not. The two that met were the increase of 60 minutes of daily physical activity and the increase in fruit and vegetable consumption. The two that were near misses was the increase in cardiovascular fitness. The target was 55%, and we made 49. And on the reduction in overweight OB students, the target was 298 students, and we made it to, down to 306. So, that is not something that we're going to have to pay back for or anything like that. It's just, you know, something to keep us moving in the direction and kind of measure the impact is what that's about. The next two things that you have in there, one is the equipment purchases, the second one's workshop and travel, and this shows, it breaks it down by school, just, you know, it just kind of shows us what we were able to do in year three for all of our schools in Haywood County. And then the final thing that you should have in there is kind of a rundown on, over three years, what we spent on training and on equipment. So, the grant has obviously had a huge impact on our physical education program across the county. At the end of, I guess, last year, we just had a short amount of time to process a few dollars left over, and we spent that money on our adaptive P, well, the schools that kind of had the collection of adaptive P needs. That's where we spent some money, to give them special equipment for EC children and handicapped children, is what that was. So, that is kind of what we have done. I'm on the job till the end of this month, and then the grant and I go silently into the night. But I appreciate this opportunity, I've enjoyed doing this, it's been great working back with these good folks, and being here for you folks, and I'll see you on the flip, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Parker. That grant has been one that we've seen a lot of positives come out of, and you do hate to see it come to the end, and I know that it takes money to do a lot of things. But with what we've got, infrastructure-wise, we need to continue on with the activities and the fitness programs that we've started in the schools. And thank you for your coming in here, Mr. Parker, and finishing out the PEP grant, it's been a very good success, started out with Ms. Boone, I believe, so, thank you. Now, we have Ms. Gardner is going to talk to us about our budget.
Good evening, Chairman Francis, members of the board, doctor and doctor. This evening, I'll be presenting an overview of our state budget allotment and a brief overview of the new salary schedules and what those look like for our folks here in Haywood County. So, let's jump in. It's hard to give a true apples-to-apples comparison when you're looking at budgets, so for our purposes this evening, we're going to look at our last state system revision and in comparison to a point in time last year, so that's about as close as we can get. Like I said, we get these system revisions throughout the year, as you are fully aware, you approve them every month, so this is kind of a point-in-time comparison. As you can see, in our state 001 classroom teachers, we received an additional seven positions. That is directly tied to what we will talk about a little bit later, where we received a significant cut in our teacher assistant allotment. The items highlighted in green, we'll discuss a little bit more in depth on the next slide. PRC 002, central office administration, we have a reduction of just a little more than $11,000. That reduction will be picked up out of local money. State 003, that program can be used to pay for substitute teachers or school clerical and school custodial staff. In Haywood County, we choose to pay the large portion of our custodial staff out of that program because that is an employee group that has a high workers' comp rate, and by paying them out of state funds, it pushes that workers' comp payment back to the state, and we don't have to use our local money to pay that higher workers' comp rate. We did receive an increase there of $30,294. We have about 53 positions currently in 003 with their flat $500 raise and the match on top of that. That total cost comes to about $33,000, so we're just a little under budget on that. However, that is a particular line item that we get small increments throughout the year. As our teachers take personal leave days, that's a $50 deduction from their pay, and that comes back to the LEA through PRC 003. So, that'll grow just a little bit as we go along. 005, school building administration, we lost one month of assistant principals, that has been moved to PRC 69 at-risk, that's the other funding source from the state that we use to pay our assistant principals. Our 007 instructional support, certified instructional support, we had a slight reduction. By the time we get to the end of the year, that's going to probably wash as teachers take days without pay here and there, so that'll wash out and should have no impact whatsoever on our local funds. Our CTE months of employment, we've lost a little over nine months of employment, and we'll talk a little bit more about that on the next slide and how Ms. Glantz will be picking up the cost of that loss. PRC 14, that is program support for our CTE teachers. We currently pay the CTE clerical assistant, and then all of their supplies and materials, workshop expense, travel expense, that type of items come from PRC 14. As you can see, we have a slight reduction there. In addition, that's going to have to also be used to pick up the loss in months of employment on PRC 13. 024 disadvantaged student supplemental funding, slight increase, of course, that's what we use each year for remediation in the middle schools. A big reduction is our 027 teacher assistance, we sustained a $344,000 reduction, we'll talk about that a little bit more in depth on the next slide. PRC 32, $158,390, we're very grateful to get that increase, however, Ms. Ferrara is, her staff is very much like our whole county system. She has a lot of staff that's in the very early portions of their career, so they receive those large salary increases. And again, we're happy to get the $158,000, but Ms. Ferrara and her assistant have been working very hard to look at all of their funding sources, to get people placed, to make the, get the biggest bang for our bucks, because that will get absorbed very quickly with the increase in retirement and the salary increases.
It didn't cover the salary first, because we're $2,000 short.
There you go. The other, the other part...
Would you repeat that, because I know they can't hear it on...
Yes, it did not cover.
It's $1,000 short.
It is $42,000 short.
Okay. Because you don't have a microphone, you can't hear it.
Right. So, she's having to move people into other funding sources and that type of thing. The other part of, other piece of this is, in years past, when teachers received a longevity, Ms. Ferrara worked very hard to put those teachers in her state money that got that longevity payment, because that would be paid out of 009, and basically, the state covers that cost. Well, with the new salary schedules, there is no longevity, that's kind of been put back into the new salary schedules, so all of our dollar and categorical allotments are now having to house the full salary cost, and it's tough. And like I said, we're happy to get the $158,000, but it's just simply not enough. Again, slight increases in 034, 054, and 055. A decrease right now, looking at it, in our transportation, but this is not our final transportation, that is a little hard to discern right now if we will actually have a $27,000 decrease. We get our final transportation allotment later in the year, after the ridership week and the efficiency rating. See, we'll probably be a couple more months before we get that final allotment, so we'll just have to track and see if we do sustain that $27,000 loss. Slight decrease in classroom materials, and another green line item, I know y'all don't want to see the green lines, because it has an impact on our local budget. We sustained a pretty hefty decrease of $152,000 in our at-risk student services. So, what do those green lines mean? Means that they're going to have a pretty significant impact in our, on our local dollars. The smaller of the green ones is PRC 13, 9.39 months of employment lost in our CTE program. That is at an approximate cost of about $33,000, so Ms. Glantz is going to have to pick up that cost out of her state, PRC 14, and local PRC 14. The local cost is around $22,000. Her local budget is typically just around $80,000, so $22,000 of that is now going to have to be where she lost that, those months of employment. And again, in these categorical and dollar allotments, when you sustain those losses or you don't, you're not funded enough, that impacts the amount of supplies and materials that you can provide for your program. So, $33,000 may not look like a lot, but when you look at $22,000 in comparison to just a total $80,000 local budget, that's a lot of money to be paid for, to be used for salary and benefits. PRC 027, a large reduction there. Last year, what we did with our TA allotment, we were able to pay all K1 plus 1 elementary TAs. In addition to that, due to budget flexibility, we were able to move our overage in that allotment into a PRC 008, where we paid for 6.2 teaching positions. I think we see that back on our 001 classroom allotment, I think that probably someone at DPI or in Raleigh looked at what Haywood County Schools did with their TA money last year, they saw that we paid 6.2 teachers out of that money, said, "Let's give it back to them in 001, but let's cut the TA allotment by $344,000." We're happy that they put those teaching positions back in our 001, but the cut is not enough to pay for our K1 plus 1 TAs. We've had to move seven elementary teaching assistant positions into local dollars at a projected cost of $199,000. PRC 69, our at-risk services state allotment, we pay a lot of social workers, guidance counselors, assistant principals, we pay some of our personnel from Central Haywood High School from that, and last year, we paid about $200,000 of our SRO cost out of state 69. This year, with the salary raises in conjunction with the reduction, there's no room in that particular program to pay any SRO cost, so that's another $200,000 that's going to be, have to be pushed into our local dollars. To give you an idea, last year, we spent only about $117,000 of local money on SROs, so that's almost going to double, triple. Salary schedules. Good news for some folks, not so good for others. Under the new salary schedule structure, teachers and certified instructional staff are no longer eligible for longevity payments. And what this slide shows is the state average salary in comparison to Haywood County Schools' average salary, and that kind of piggybacks on what Mr. Hines presented, we have a very young staff. We have those, in that 0 to 10 step, is about 45% of our total teacher and instructional certified staff. And I guess, again, that kind of goes hand-in-hand with the teacher turnover report that he just presented. In our school system, the salary increases for our teachers and instructional support personnel ranged from .29%, that's not a typo, that's less than a half percent raise, to as high as 18.41%. Now, we are very happy for those folks that got those big raises, couldn't be happier, but I have to be honest with you, looking at that from the system level, across the board, and just the randomness of all of those raises, and realizing that you have a teacher in Classroom A that received probably a .68% raise, and right across the hall, a teacher that received a greater than 14% or 15% raise. You know, I think that even for those folks that received the bigger raises, it's tough for them to be happy and celebrate that, because they understand the discrepancy in the raises. People, you know, I know we've all heard that everyone received an average of a 7% raise, they probably would have done better just to have given everyone a 7% raise, rather than have these huge discrepancies among our teachers. That .29% represents our teaching staff that's on the Step 30. A teacher that is an A certificate, Step 30, received $14 a month as a raise.
Step 30 is how many years of experience?
They're starting their 31st year of teaching.
So, you, the ones that have the most experience got the least raise?
Yes, sir.
Some actually took a loss, did they, once they jumped in?
That, well, that's our next, that's our, we have 18 of those folks, Mr. Rogers, you're exactly right. And what the legis, what the wording was, that they couldn't take a reduction in pay, they had to maintain their salary and longevity for last year, plus they receive an additional $1,000 on top of that, paid monthly, and of course, there's no guarantee that they'll get that, that's just for this year. They are held harmless at their 13, 14 salary schedule, plus their longevity, and we have 18 of those, and those are folks that are starting their 32nd year and higher. Here's kind of the average increases for, by step. Again, we have a lot in that first 0 to 10 step, and again, we're very happy for those folks. There's just some discrepancies as you go up, up the scale, and I broke it down like this because with the longevity, when longevity was a piece of the puzzle, at the 15-year, the 20-year, and the 25-year, you got an automatic increase in the percent of your salary on your longevity. For example, when you went from 20 to 24 and you were starting your 25th year, your longevity increased from 3.25% to 4.5% of your raise, so these folks were already getting a 1.25% increase in that year. So, I, personally, the way I look at that average of 4.3, I take off that 1.25, because they would have gotten that anyway with their longevity. Average increases for our principals range from .65% to the highest being slightly over 2%. In contrast to the teacher and instructional support schedules, it was flip-flopped. The principal raises are, their schedule now is more like a bell shape. Those that are the least experienced and those that are the more experienced receive the least raises. If you remember back on the teacher schedules, you know, they just zipped up. You have a comparison in front of you where you can see that 0 to 10 step and what those increases are, but our principals that are early in their principal careers receive the smaller increases in our counting. The average increases for Haywood County School Assistant Principals range from 1.98% up to 10.38%. Many of our assistant principals actually benefited from a piece of legislation that was passed in July 1, 2009, that stated that if an AP goes from a classroom teacher straight to an AP position without a break in service, that they are to be paid on the higher of the two scales, the teacher scale or this assistant principal scale. Well, under the new salary schedules, the master teacher schedule is much higher than the assistant principal schedule, so, you know, they benefited from that. If you were hired in 2008, it didn't apply to you, unfortunately. So, what is the impact of certified salary increases on the local supplement? Last year, for all personnel receiving a local supplement, the actual supplement itself and matching benefits, the total cost was $1,746,000. This year, the projected cost for certified-only local supplement, not our non-certified folks, but the supplement itself and the matching benefit on certified is $1,741,000. So, our projections on what our non-certified local supplement is going to be is between $240,000 upwards of $265,000, so we know our county supplement is going to increase by that amount. And again, if you think in terms of the new salary, salary schedules for teachers, housing that longevity piece, we didn't used to pay the supplement percent on the longevity, but now that all that's kind of built into those salary schedules, our local county supplement is paying that percent on basically the longevity. And finally, I just wanted to mention our non-certified employees' salary schedules. We're kind of in a bond with our non-certified folks. Mr. Phillips and I attended the finance officers' meeting in August. Some of the LEAs are using local dollars to try to work out of the fix that we are in with non-certified employees, but what has happened, the combination of flat raises along with no raises has created a situation where the state provides a minimum and a maximum salary for all of our non-certified steps. And instead of holding that minimum down and not increasing it, this year and 10 or 12 years ago, when they received a flat $1,000 or a flat $1,200, the state increased that minimum, so you can't pay anyone less, our brand-new people have to make that minimum. So, now, we have a situation where someone that's coming to work in a non-certified position right off the street is making the same as a non-certified person that has worked for our system for 10 years. I don't know the fix on that, you know, it would require a commitment from local dollars, and as you can see, there's about $700,000 that's already been pushed into our local funds for this coming year. In addition, on the non-certified salary schedule, when the state gives a $500 flat raise, for example, if I'm a 10-month person, that means I get a $50 a month raise. If I'm a 12-month person, I get a $41.67 a month raise. Well, this year, in combination of previous years, like I said, 10 or 12 years ago where they were given just a flat dollar amount, what that has created is, for example, a 10-month clerical position at a pay grade 60 has a monthly salary income of $2,264.91. A 12-month clerical person on that same pay grade has a monthly salary of $2,192.23, which is a monthly difference of $72. Anyway, thank you. Are there any questions?
Say it.
No. Thank you.
Angie, thank you for the information.
So much for her.
Blows me away.
Wow, there's ground squirrel, honey.
Wow, there's ground coral, honey.
Dr. Nolte.
Mr. Chairman, Board, Dr. Garrett, staff, and guests, next time I'd like to go before She's very smart, and that's going to be hard to follow. Just a couple of things for information. First of all, the logo that you see behind you on the board that we, on the wall that we know and love was created in 1993. It was part of long-range planning and was part of our vision and mission at that time. Eight years ago, we changed our mission, and our logo really doesn't fit anymore. So, we've gone out on a limb and spent about $850 to create a contemporary logo that we can use as a template, and we have the capacity to use that in a number of ways. It will also allow the district to put vision and mission stuff under it or around it, so 20 or 30 years from now, they won't be in a situation where their logo doesn't match. They can choose it if they like, but it won't be embedded with vision and mission language that no longer exists. So, we've done that. We'll have the capacity now with these templates to begin very slowly over the next couple of years, in a very, in a very slow process, to put this on letterhead. We have the capacity, when we get to the point where we're developing apps or applications for the school district, to use it in that way. We'll be able to use it for printing and other purposes, and that was just a step that we needed to do, especially in conjunction with the website updates that we have talked to you about over the last couple of months that we'll be implementing pretty soon. Those websites are actually ready, but with all the other training we're doing right now, it'll take us a little while to train our webmasters on the new sophomore. So, that's just a piece of information for you, and it's neat and clean and contemporary and can be used for decades without being inaccurate in the language on it. So, that's for your information. The other thing, just real quickly, we don't often spend a lot of time in board meetings talking to you all about training, because we do a lot of training. So, our staff people are current, but we do have the one big mandatory professional development day coming up on October the 6th, and we have put at your seat a draft agenda. There are a couple pending items that are highlighted, and if you have any questions about those, you can contact me later. And if you're just not working that day or bored and see a session that you love, we'll try to squeeze you in. Some of those sessions do have caps on them, but we are very excited about that particular training. So, just those couple items for you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Nolte. We have had some folks sign up for the open session part of our agenda. Now is the time period designated by the Board of Education for public comments. This time is set aside for comments from the general public in regard to matters of concern to the public. However, comments addressing specific students and/or personnel are prohibited due to confidentiality laws and regulations. Comments are limited to three minutes. The Board requests that all speakers adhere to the time limitation and prohibition against mentioning individual students and personnel. The Board recognizes Mr. Mike Clampett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Member of the School Board, and I'll do Dr. Squared rather than Dr. Dr. Square. I don't mean you're square, but. Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'll hand these to the Secretary, if you'd be so kind to pass this out so they can follow along with this presentation, please. Without that, you won't know what I'm talking about. And don't hold my three minutes against me while she hands those out, please. Little bit about me while she does that, I'm Mike Clampett, I'm from Bryson City. I'm a retired fire captain from one of the largest metropolitan fire departments in North Carolina, first responder, BLET instructor, EMT instructor, et cetera, of all that. I had the privilege of doing that for 31 years totally. In your packet, if you'll be so kind to open it up, and you'll look on the left-hand side, you'll have a copy of the General Assembly's ratified bill for Senate Bill 744, which is this year's budget bill. I kindly made a copy of that for you, so you know this is the ratified bill. And if you'll go to page two of that, you'll see page 38 of the budget, supply of emergency epinephrine and auto-injectors. I'm sorry to hear about the tragedy of the young person. Children should always live with their parents. I don't know if you know what epinephrine is, or if you know what anaphylaxis is or not, but I hold in my hand something that's life-saving to all of us in here that have allergic reactions. I've had four true anaphylaxis reactions in my lifetime, some were on duty and some were off. Point being is, in the amount of three minutes' time that I'm talking to you tonight, if you don't have an EpiPen or an epinephrine pen to take and have pharmaceutical intervention, you will die, because your throat will close up and you'll stop breathing. You can't breathe. Point being with that is, now if you'll turn over to the second page, the second side, there's a company called BioRidge, which is bio-pharma. And folks, I'm not here to sell you something, I'm not here to ask for money, I'm here to give you something. This company has a program called EpiPens for Schools, or Pens for Schools, and they will provide four of these. EpiPen Juniors, now this is a regular prescription one, and this is a trainer, okay? And when you buy, get these at the pharmacy, they get all three of these at a time, so you can train yourself with that. The first two pages explains the program, how to go about doing it. What I've done is take and provided that information, but also have taken, I've downloaded the form, which will be the second page, to the parts that's not glued together or taped together. You can get up to four EpiPens per school, K through 12. It's got 17 schools, I think, here in Haywood County, thereabouts. That being the case, at 112 bucks a piece, we're looking at $4,000 with that, and that's what these, these cost, et cetera. I know this time, but give me just 30 seconds. Point being is, I have all the information in here, it's easy to follow, it's all put together for you, there's no charge to it. This is a free program from Mylan Corporations. I don't represent Mylan. The reason I'm doing this is I have a concern. I learned this by accident, reading the budget, and I'm one of those few people that read dry stuff like that. And I've had anaphylaxis, and just so your parents know and the rest of you, Mylan Corporation will give you a no-pay card, and that's how I've got my pens, at no co-pay. All you got to do is go Google on the website, "free EpiPen," and that's how you get it. But you've got all the information, everything's highlighted, your packet's there for you to make copies, whatever you need to do. If you have any question, I'll be happy to answer it, but no hidden agenda. I'm here because I've, I have a concern, because I'm retired fire service, and I've answered those, and I have that personal problem with having anaphylaxis. So, just so you, I got stung with a bee a couple of weeks ago, and I ended up taking 10 Benadryl, 250 milligrams, and I did not go to sleep, believe it or not. I wasn't having a problem breathing, I had a problem itching. So, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Clampett, and we'll make sure our superintendent, I think you've given her the information, we'll follow up with this.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you had 12 copies of that, and all those of y'all's, everyone got the same packet, so you can share, feel free with the information. And any parent wants to find out about that, they can find out from you too. And they also will give you a training DVD video, and the trainers to go with it, and your little box, so you'll be able to secure those in offices at no charge. And being an old firefighter, I don't like reinventing the wheel, so that's why I'll bring you the information, and DPI is going to require it by November this year anyhow.
Okay.
You can save yourself and the state money. Thank you.
Next, we have Jean Paris and Ellen Pitt.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and doctors, for having us in here tonight. We're mainly here to invite you. It came to my attention, and then, of course, Jean got up with me, we're having one of the most important elections in this district that will ever come along, and that's for our district attorney. And when you get out and talk to people, if they've not been involved in the judicial process as a victim or a criminal or whatever, they don't even know who the district attorney is now. They don't know who's running, they don't know what the DA does, or what he's supposed to do, or what his challenges are. And so, we have two candidates, both of them excellent, and so, we've scheduled a debate/forum, and it's very community-oriented, it's not lawyer-oriented. We want everybody to be able to ask a question, and we have an impartial moderator from Buncombe County, who's an attorney, and he will screen those questions, and if people, 100 people ask the same one, he'll combine it in some fashion. And we're going to have a reception right after that, and so, we all know how important that role is, and so, do we get six minutes, because there's two of us?
We must.
She must.
I don't have time to say your name.
Well, there's two names on the list here, so.
Yeah. We, we know that there's lots of things that happen in the courtroom that we don't understand, and one of the things that we don't understand and we think needs to be changed, and we want a district attorney who is willing to work toward that. We have had lots and lots of arrests in this county of drug dealers. We're not out there to get drug users. We want the dealers. If you know one, let us know. But we'll, we'll send them in a room. But this guy's plead out, plead down, and up, and whatever they do, and they get a slap on the wrist, and they're back on the street the next day selling drugs again. And we want that stopped. That's the bottom line to the debate, see which one of those people we think will become the closest to stopping that ridiculous procedure. A couple of things, I want to say they're not related to that. We want you to come to the prayer walk. That is the drug prayer walk we had last year, we had 400 people. My goal is 600 more, 600 people. Greg Christopher's goal is 1,000 people. He says, now, we can have 1,000 people, so let's try.
It's not that far to walk either.
No, and some of you did it last year, and we have buses, you can't ride up the hill, we'll load you up the hill. I rode all the way last year, and I'll probably ride all the way this year, because I ride in a lead car, and Ellen rides in a lead car, so we get our names out and faces out there, because we want people to know us too. I want to say something very personal to me, and I'm sure it's personal to Dr. Garrett, but who, who in the world would ever thought about $1.4 million grant and to ALC? And I hope you all are proud of that, in particular of that, and I am so pleased with that. I worked with them in trying to get lunches for those kids, and I don't want to take away their lunches, we'll keep giving them lunches, but we wanted to get some things they need. So, thank you all so much.
Thank you. Thank you both.
I only have one more thing to say, and that is that I don't know who's been watching the news for the last couple of days, but I'm thankful in Haywood County that I've had, I've not had the media pursue me about anything like what's been going on in Cherokee County. And so, thank you for your responsibility, for role modeling for the students that you're here to take care of. And also, as many of you know, my mission is about child passengers riding with impaired drivers, and during the month of August, we had three separate arrests where the children were out in the middle of the night with drug or alcohol impaired drivers. So, if you have students falling asleep at their desk, or that come to work dirty or unkempt, I would like for you to always be aware that they may have been out all night with that parent, and I think that everybody goes that extra step and tries to investigate that and look into it, and thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you both for your comments. Board members, you've had an opportunity to look at the August eleventh closing regular session minutes. At this time, I'll entertain a motion that'd be approved.
Will they be approved?
Ms. Miller's made the motion, I'll hear a second. Senator Mr. Francis, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. We have deleted item number 14 from our agenda. Now, I've recognized Dr. Nolte for our school improvement plans.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, staff, I won't say doctors, and guests, every two years, the school district reviews its data from the previous year or so, and develops five goals in a district improvement plan that are designed to guide the schools as they develop their plans. And you reviewed and approved our district plan back in March. We worked on our district plan from early January till your board meeting in March. And the, since last March, the schools have been working on their plans. They turned those in to me a couple of weeks ago. They've done a very thorough job of looking at their data. The plans have been reviewed by myself and the supervisors, and we may ask them to go back and strengthen, strengthen a point or two, but overall, they're very good and solid plans, and data-driven in particular, the first goal in each plan, which has to do with career and college readiness. At this time, I hope you've had a chance to look at the plans. We've scanned all of those in by elementary, middle, and high school, and we need your approval for the plans and the attached waivers. The waivers are mainly to allow some flexibility with using textbooks, and in the past, where we could place teacher assistants, and of course, we don't have many of those left. But at this time, we present the plans to you for your consideration and hopefully your approval.
Thank you, Dr. Nolte, and I appreciate the hard work that's gone into these school improvement plans. There's a lot of detail in them, a lot of interesting reading. This time, we entertain a motion, we approve the school improvement, approved the school improvement plans.
Mr. Chairman, this time, I'd like to approve the elementary, middle school, and high school's school improvement plans.
We have a motion on the floor from Mr. Rogers, I hear a second. Senator Mr. Leatherwood, any questions or discussion on the motion?
Yes, sir. Dr. Nolte, what years' data did we use to approve these plans?
We used the data from 12, 13. 13, 14 was released last week, and I've been copying you all in on my emails with the state.
The reason I'm asking.
Yes.
Lady, lady.
This is an inside joke, they didn't give me the data that I needed to sort the data. We literally rank every school in the state, K-5, 6, 8, 9, 12, alternative, traditional high schools, early and middle colleges, and on the preliminary spreadsheets they gave us, they didn't put a grade span by the school name. And so, anyway, they emailed us, Dr. Atkinson has, and we love Dr. Atkinson, so, but she's emailed us and said, we'll get our data this week, and then we'll have the new data. We'll hopefully, if all goes as scheduled, present that to you at the October School Board meeting. And we do go back and revise the plans. They're working documents, they're not intended to be, create them and put them on the shelf. The only time we ever bring them back to you is if there's a significant change in a particular goal. If they change their strategies, then we don't bring them back, but if there's a particular goal change, so. And we, as you all know, we meet with each school and representatives from their school improvement teams each semester, and have a long conversation, usually about an hour and a half, sometimes a little shorter and sometimes a lot longer. And we talk to them about, okay, what's in your plan, what have you seen so far, what do you, is, are your strategies, do they seem to be working? Do you need to change your, change your strategies? And so, we've done that now for several years, where we actually go out and sit down with each school and talk to them about planned components and other things.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions, comments?
No, sir.
Good, good to clarify that. That was quite a.
And that's by design. The state likes those plans to be ready at the beginning of the school year, either the August or September meeting, and they know that their data's not going to be released sometimes before the plans do.
Any other questions, comments? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Nolte. Board recognizes Mr. Mark Shepherd.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. Tonight, we just have policy C1, graduation requirements, that has been revised for you guys to look at, and of course, this is the second time you've seen it, but if you first compare this to the current policy, the first thing you would notice on the front page the current policy, the first thing you would notice on the front page is you'd only see three columns instead of the four that's on the existing policy. That's because we've separated out the OCS requirements. They're on the second page, this document. They were just so different, and working with Joan Farrar, we felt like we could make those more clear by just bringing those out of that chart, making their own, kind of their own chart, and it does look pretty clear. We also made that note at the top of the second page, that certain eligible students are eligible for that OCS status, and not just anyone who is an EC student. We also made the note there that now Haywood Early College requires 28 credits to graduate instead of the 24 they had before when they first began. We've made the note there on page three about early graduation, and of course, that's heavily dependent upon the principal's recommendation. Same thing for dual enrollment and community college credit courses. On to page four, the minimum credit high school diploma is something new that the state has come out with. It's really an extreme, like it says there, or an emergency situation. The principal can allow a student to graduate. You know, this would be like a student at the end of his career. Things have possibly started to fall apart in their lives, and it doesn't look like they're going to make it another school year, or to be able to get those extra credits, which end up being elective credits, so they can, they can nominate that student to graduate with the state minimum 22 credits. There's also a little process that they'll have to go through to do that. It's enumerated there as well. In section four, we basically had a whole lot of detail on the testing part out there, and basically, we've made it a whole lot more general, just basically saying that students have to take whatever, you know, tests or state required, whether they be, you know, EOCs, final exams, CTE assessments, or whatever, just whatever the state says, they have to take them. It also makes note of the CPR requirement, but that's being taken care of in the, in the eighth grade, in PE classes and health classes. The North Carolina Scholars Program is very different than it used to be. It was, it used to be just a, kind of a nominal add-on to a diploma, where you could take a few arts and vocational classes, and you'd be deemed a North Carolina Scholar. It's pretty involved now. If you want that designation on your diploma, you're gonna have to work for it, and it's pretty clearly laid out there for you if you want it. Any questions on that?
Yeah, just for information, just to help me out here. Going back to early graduation.
Right.
With all these requirements, is that even a possibility to do anymore? And again, it asks about the direction, approval of the superintendent and discretion of the principal. Do you, is there something laid out that shows a kid that they could do this, if it was possible? I've just never seen it.
You would, you're, you would basically be looking at the same regimen that a student at Central Haywood High School would have.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions about C-1? This is a second reading on this. This time, we entertain a motion that we approve C-1 as presented.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rogers made the motion. I hear a second.
Second.
Say to Ms. Milner, any questions or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor. Please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Shepherd.
Thank you.
Now, we're gonna have our item number 16B, which we added under building and grounds, has some items that we need to approve tonight, or to consider, I guess is a better word.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a four things from a building and ground. The first one, I'd like to make a motion that we declare the old Hazelwood Daycare as a surplus.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to declare the Hazelwood Daycare as a surplus property. I hear a second to the motion. Say to Ms. Shandible, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor. Please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
The second, I'd also like to make a motion. We accept a change order for $6,758 for the Pesca High School addition. It's getting down to the final stages before we move into it, and this money comes out of the contingency that killed the project.
And my understanding is, we haven't spent all of the contingency at all, so it's been very, very good, so. We have a motion. I hear a second.
Second.
Say to Mr. Rogers, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor. Please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
The third thing is make this a form of motion also to approve a new roof for the Waynesville Middle School, a building that had cost $175,000. It's old as real enough, burned. Roof starts leaking, and one thing to do, and that's fix.
Either that or tear it down. Costs more to tear it down. But we need the space. We have a motion on the floor. I hear a second.
Second.
Say to Mr. Francis, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor. Please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
The fourth and final thing is, up at Tuscaloosa High School, we have property that we declared surplus, and it appears no movement has been made at this time. So we would like to nullify this motion for school safety and other reasons.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
This is a property going up in the Tuscaloosa High School.
Okay. I hear a second to the motion.
Second.
Say to Ms. Milner, any questions or discussion? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor. Please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate all the hard work and the building and grounds. Y'all are busy. Now, we have our monthly financial reports from our finance chair, Mr. Jim Francis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The finance committee has met and reviewed the monthly financial reports. Everything seemed to be in order. I think, goodness, it was a short meeting this time. We've had some long ones here lately, but everything's in order. So at this time, I would like to bring before the Board a motion to approve the regular financial meetings for September.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the monthly financial report. I hear a second.
Second.
Say to Mr. Leatherwood, I believe, got you. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor. Please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
That's all I have at this point, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, and again, thank you to the finance committee for their hard work in getting all this ready for the board meeting. Now, we'll recognize Dr. Ann Garrett for our personnel.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, for your information, we have 12 separation from employments, eight employee status changes, and four leave of absences. For your approval, we have 25 employments, we have 44 employment status changes, we have three leave of absences, 14 contracted services, 23 substitutes, four employee coaches, two volunteer coach services, and one volunteer service.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the personnel as presented?
I move.
Mr. Leatherwood's made the motion. I hear a second. Say to Ms. Milner, any questions or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor. Please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, I would like to ask Mr. Trevor Putnam, Principal at Waynesville Middle School, to introduce our new assistant principal.
I have to use the Dr. Squared. I love that. And members of the Board, I'd like to introduce tonight our new assistant principal at Waynesville Middle School. She's a 17-year veteran at Bethel Middle School. As I indicated at the last meeting, looking for those folks that are passionate and productive and want student success, and she has demonstrated that in the classroom, has been a teacher leader for many years, and that person is Ms. Jennifer Reeves.
Chairman and Board, Dr. Garrett and Dr. Nolte and administration, thank you for this opportunity and your confidence in me to go to Waynesville Middle School and serve as an, as an assistant principal. Mr. Putnam did mention that I started in 2001. When I came to, came to Haywood County, I started at Bethel Middle School, and it will always hold a special place in my heart, but I'm gonna go back to Waynesville and have the best interest of the staff, the students, and the stakeholders with me as I start my assistant principal position there.
Congratulations, Ms. Reeves, and we appreciate your willingness to serve in Haywood County schools. I see you got your black and gold on tonight. Good job.
Job required.
Job required. But again, congratulations and thank you. There being no further business, the Haywood County Board of Education, meeting adjourned.